Okay.
About four minutes, four minutes.
The pressure is on, oh goodness.
So stand by, Marie, who's going to be opening the meeting?
I am, and I'll just take one of these.
Sure.
Right. No, just go stand, that's all right, I will be here.
All right, are you guys ready? Stand by.
Hello, thank you for joining us for our public forum today on November 5th. We are going over what's a draft warrant, we're not going to have our town meeting until November, but there's a lot of very difficult, serious issues on the November warrant. So we decided to have a little bit of an early public forum so people could hear what was coming on the warrant. So you, the back of the room, we have draft warrants, they are also on the website if you're following at home and you can see what the draft warrants are, some of the numbers aren't solid, we're still working on them and we'll get information on them. If you have questions in regards to any of the warrants, you can send them to me and I'll send them around to the various employees to get your answers for you. We will have the posting of the actual warrant around October 21st, I believe. Twenty second? Okay, we sign on the 21st so that meeting you can watch and then it will be posted on the 22nd. We'll be taking these out of order because we have some distinguished guests here to answer our questions. So the very first warrant article will be in regards to the DPW site and the asbestos removal. What number is that called?
Eleven.
Eleven, it'll be Article 11, and as I said, there are handouts in the back of the room. The presentation will be made and then there'll be time opening for questions. So if you could please introduce yourselves and we'll start Article 11. But first, actually, I would like Paul Pasturjik, if you could come up, introduce the article and then talk a little bit about the funding. And then he'll pass it on to you. Thank you.
Article 11 is going to be asking folks to bond an additional amount for the DPW project. As folks have probably heard, we've run into environmental issues, asbestos, that the gentleman over here will be directing with some amounts, quite a large bit, like $2.5 million worth of removal costs, so on and so forth. And we're working out with the final number that will be included on the warrant. The actual reading of Article 11 is a little bit vague, it has been written by town council, but it will be a bond issue authorization, just so people are aware when the actual motion is read, that's how it will be read. Two little tidbits or one other little tidbit about the financing of this. I just want to set the amounts straight for one second. That the original bond issue was authorized on May 9th, 2017, in Article Number 10. The bond issue was $21,205,000. We actually issued a bond in August of 2018 and we issued $19,860,000 towards the DPW project. We had a large amount of premiums that came in on that bond issue. And in October of 2018, in Article 4, we utilized those premiums to the tune of $1,345,000. Town meeting appropriated that amount of money back into the project to bring us back to the original $21,205,000 that was available. At this point in time, there is still some bond authorization that has been approved and unissued by the town and it's another $1.345 million. So that amount is still available for the select board or the town to actually go out and issue that debt and it does not need further town meeting approval or any other votes at this point in time. If that were to happen, the total cost of the DPW project, if we needed to, would be $22,550,000. I don't know if you have any questions of what I have said, otherwise I will turn it over to Weston and Sampson and Colliers, our architect, engineer, and owners' project managers.
My name is Mike Richard, I'm from Weston and Sampson Engineers.
Yeah, I'm Tim Alex, I'm with Colliers International, we're the owners' project managers for the project.
And I'm Adam Delisio, also with Colliers International.
And Jeff Alverdi from Weston and Sampson.
So what we're going to be walking through tonight is just, we're going to go through a little bit of the timeline associated with the asbestos that has been found at the site and then we'll talk about the financial impact. So this is the site, that building that you see there, that's the, what is now the former tennis court that has been since taken down since the town acquired the property and since we've gone to construction. We've done a couple of environmental assessments on the property, some of that came before the purchase and acquisition of the property and some of that came afterwards and I'll talk a little bit about that. Going back to January 2016, this goes back to prior to the town acquisition of the property. We were in a position where we were trying to allocate the proper funds, try to give the town the appropriate budget numbers so that they could allocate the proper funds for the project. So we're trying to get, we're trying to nail down what could be some potential impacts. One thing that we did was we went and did a non-invasive hazardous building material investigation. That's where we walk through the building and do sort of a visual assessment of the property, things that could be potential contaminants or contain hazardous building materials. We'll walk through, we'll look at the window caulking, the roofing material, other things, sealants, other things that could contain PCBs, asbestos, other potential concerns. And we take inventory of that and we tabulate that for allocation into the project budget. And then in March 2017, just before the town took ownership of the property, we did a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, this is very common before acquisitions of property. The Phase 1 does, what it does is you look at existing information that's available. We do file reviews at DEP, we do reviews with the fire department, we look for any evidence of potential spills on the property, we interview the town owner and do that type of assessment. And what you're looking for there, it- I'm sorry, property owner, thank you. And so what we're looking for there is we're looking for potential contaminants that might require further investigation, recs they call them. In this case, we didn't identify any, there was no environmental concerns on the property. In June 2017, that's where the acquisition took place. And so now we're into ownership of the property. And now getting ready for design and bidding of the project, we went out and we did a hazardous building material investigation, we completed the work that we had started previously. At this point in time, we can go and take destructive samples, we can take samples and send them to the lab, et cetera. And through this course of action, what we did identify is that the tennis courts did contain some asbestos-containing material and the underlayment to the courts. So we then prepared the contract bids, we incorporated that information into the project and it went out to bid and in May 2018, the project was awarded to the current GC, Monford. As they mobilized to the site and they started their site work, they ended up opening a hole in the building, shed a lot of lights, and that yellow highlighted area that you see in the building, that's the burnt-out section, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but at one point in time, the building caught fire. That building was boarded up, that portion of the building was boarded up, it was never used again. The former tennis courts were removed and it was an earth floor there. So as the contractor mobilized the site and they opened up the wall, it shed a lot of light inside the building and they found some material that they suspected could be asbestos. They called us out there, we took a look at it, sure enough, the material tested positive for asbestos. They also found some debris outlining the perimeter of the property, outlined the perimeter of the parking area, stockpiles that had been left there for, you know, 15 years or so with some fragments that also tested positive. You could see those there and those, thank you Jeff, various locations to the north and to the south. Then in July 2018, as the parking lot was removed, the contractor again saw material that was underneath the pavement, some flakes of material that they suspected to be asbestos. We again went out to the site, tested the material and it too tested positive for asbestos. And from July 2018 through January 2019, we're working with the DEP to try to identify potential remedial options and what would be best for this site. And then in January 2019, we received permitting from Mass DEP to move that material to the landfill. Now I'll turn it over to Colliers.
Yes, I'll pick up on this, some of the, what the impact financially this had on the project. So we tried to boil this down to ACM and site-related impacts, changes that we had to do along the way as we discovered this and it was multiple changes, but it amounted to just under $2.9 million of approved changes. There's still just under $700,000, $695,000 is pending, having to do with the asbestos, it's not the removal itself, but it's other impacts. So in total, we had impacts from just these asbestos site-related issues of just under $3.6 million. So when we went out to bid, the bids came in very favorably, they were under our budget by almost $2 million, by $1.970 million under our budget. So if we applied that bid savings, if you will, against that expenditures that we had for the ACM, the asbestos-containing materials, it nets out at about $1.6 million that really we incurred that expense and we've paid for that against our budget. So what we would like to do to reimburse our contingency, to replenish our contingency was to bring it up to about 7% contingency or $900,000 and then carrying forward that pending possible exposures of the 695, so just under $1.6 million is what we would be looking for to add to our budget. Now, there is a distinction between our budget that we were working with versus what the town had appropriated or authorized for bonding, are two different numbers. There's other costs involved that the town was working with that weren't part of our true construction number, that was the purchase of the land and some other expenditures, other costs. So we had been carrying $18,604, was it, yeah, $18,604,000 as our total budget. So the $18,604 plus the basically 1.6 comes to about $20,202,000. So that's really what we see as our exposure for this. I believe Paul had mentioned that there is still 1.345 that was eligible to be, hasn't been spoken for under the current authorization. So it would leave about $250,000 to $350,000, we would say, is what we would need to supplement our current funds to be able to complete the project.
Okay, that's the presentation, any questions, please come to the microphone. Could we stay at three questions each so then someone else can come up and then if you have more questions, so we don't, everyone has a chance to come up.
Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive, 31-year resident. First thing, the presentation will go up on the town website, I presume?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So, look, Marie said very difficult issue, so I'm just gonna do a quick analogy, okay? I wasn't gonna do this, but it's a difficult issue and I'm just a country guy. So you got a $200,000 kitchen renovation, the contractor says you got 10% cost savings, you feel real good about that, he finds a little asbestos, comes back and says last August, it's gonna cost 20 grand, feel good about that. You keep going and now it should have been done, project should have been done. Now all of a sudden, instead of being 20%, excuse me, 10% under budget, you're gonna be 10% over budget and it's gonna take another year. And the contractor just came to me looking for a check. That's my analogy, but let's go to this for a minute. So environmental, Phase 1, thank you for telling us there was a Phase 1, it was unclear when I asked people if a Phase 1 was done. So you did a desk, Phase 1 in essence. You mentioned a walk-through. So part of it was dark, there was a fire, you mentioned the asbestos tiles. I would assume, you would have assumed that those asbestos tiles had asbestos, given the time that this was constructed. So up front, you knew there was asbestos in the tiles?
It was, we saw asbestos in the tennis court.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything vinyl like that, that was in the 70s, potentially would have had asbestos.
So it was an underlayment and under, over a bituminous asphalt surface?
So probably you would think about it. The general walk-through of the property, there was large berms with asbestos, that was not noticed by anyone when they walked the property and the perimeter?
No, so there were berms, those berms have been sitting there for 15 years or so, they were covered with leaves and other debris, they were covered with soil, decayed leaves, et cetera. No, it didn't look, it didn't look anything out of the ordinary.
Okay, and the prior owner was asked, you know, anything we should know about, leaky oil tank, asbestos, et cetera, the answer was?
No.
No. Okay, in your Phase 1, you did review the commercial building inspector reports of the fire department?
Yes.
Also the town building inspector reports?
Yes.
And nothing that would have mentioned asbestos, et cetera?
No.
Okay. You did a further later on, so the town took the property in June of 2017, asbestos was not discovered until August. Originally it was gonna be 200 grand or so and it got worse, we'll talk about that in the financial. Did you ever do a full Phase 2 or anything like that?
No, there was nothing from Phase 1 that would lead us towards a Phase 2.
Okay, but once asbestos was discovered, did you escalate your environmental review?
No, not at that time, we did not.
And the reason was not in the budget or didn't suspect additional asbestos?
Actually, I will add, one point that's missing there is that after we did discover the asbestos, we went back to the burnt-out section and we tested a couple pieces of debris that tested negative for asbestos.
Okay, but when the berms, et cetera, nobody went into the woods, did a full?
No, so once the berms were discovered, we did do, we did do a walk-through to make sure that we had that all covered.
Okay. And there's new asbestos being discovered, but I'll be honest with you, I mean, it's buried, I get that. So I'm good on the due diligence upfront, we can talk about the financial math.
Steve Wallman, Pine Wood Drive. My question basically is the legal liability of who's responsible for paying for the asbestos removal, especially that asbestos that was under the drive, under the parking lot? Because asbestos doesn't grow on trees, it had to have been placed there. And prior to that parking lot and prior to the tennis courts, there were trees. So that means that the previous owner knew or should have known that there was asbestos there, especially under the parking lot. So therefore, why hasn't the town filed a lawsuit against the previous owner for the total cost of asbestos removal?
Sure you don't want to answer that?
No.
According to the law, if you find it, you have to remediate it. So Department of Environmental Protection was working with us to make sure we did it appropriately and removed it safely and quickly. In regards to what we can do further, we are working with our legal team to decide what is the appropriate next step, so we are working on that right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you want to go next, no one else, you can go for your next set of questions.
Would you mind flipping back to the financial piece? And so Paul, I appreciate your description of bond math and premiums, but, and I agree with all that, but at the end of the day, cash is fungible, so I'll do this rough if I, and bear with me. So the crux of the issue is 4 million of additional costs, 20% over, because as Paul stated or in the thing here, there should have been $2 million of cost savings. So what happened is somebody's been playing with house money here. That 2 million that should have been in our pocket has now been used to clean up asbestos. So a property that costs 2.6 million is now gonna be 2.6 million plus 3 million asbestos removal, give or take? Okay. So let's just go back here, the original approved project was 21.2 million in 2017 at the groundbreaking. The expected cost was 19.2. Now the expected cost is, I've got 22.9 or an increase of 3.7 million. It doesn't have the number on the warrant, as far as I know, but I would estimate that the townspeople in November are gonna be asked for 1.5 to 1.7 million of additional charges. Sound about right?
Is that a question?
Yeah.
I can't answer that until I reconcile with Colliers.
Okay. Okay, just, I'll be on record, take my word for it. Approximate numbers are in the building committee minutes. So, look, I'm not doing this as a personal thing, I just don't like the process in terms of transparency, fiscal responsibility and fiduciary. Like I said, it should have been 2 million to the taxpayers' benefit, it's now 2 million on the other side. And we're talking rough numbers here, let me ask a couple of questions about the project as it stands now, if I can appropriate. Okay, so I drive by there three weeks ago, it looks like Newtown Athletic Fields. As I said in the September 3rd board meeting, the guys that were there, there was two of them, they had khakis on, no calluses on their hands, so they weren't real workers. The other day, there's four people with yellow vests, so the real workers are finally there. There's a couple of vertical stands, finally put some rebar in the ground, you know, this thing is not moving along too quick. So it should be done by now, we're 15 months into construction. How much longer is it gonna take?
You want to field that?
Yeah, right now, June of 2020 is our expected completion.
Nine months more. Wow. Meanwhile, there's a medical building across the street and two major intersections that got done. So we're talking nine months, we're talking a lot of money and Paul, I get the bond math, but there's 300 more in the bonding, but cash is fungible. 4 million's 4 million, that 4 million could have gone to a turf field, it could have gone to Wolf Swamp Fields, it could have gone to stabilize the tax rate. the tax rate. It's cash out the door. So, we're talking nine more months at least. Colliers is the GC.
No.
I'm sorry, they did that in the paper, I'm sorry. Monford is the GC. You guys don't want, you guys don't want that. So, as of right now, and as Paul said, we don't have a number, but there are delay damages that the contractor is looking for. So, I get the replenished contingency, possible pending exposures. I'm presuming that's delay damages?
Correct.
Okay. Has that number been agreed to with Monford?
No.
Okay. That number could go higher.
Potentially, it could go higher. It hasn't been agreed upon yet.
What's the bid and the ask?
I'm sorry?
What's the bid and the ask? What do they want? What is the town offered?
We're, haven't gone through final negotiations. I would say it's too early to say what, I would say that number represents what they're asking for.
Okay. Building commission meeting, there was a larger number, but I'll go with that Also, let's talk about percentage of completion. And you and I talked about this the other night, but, and I wasn't quite sure, like I said, this is a very complicated issue for me. Should've taken fifteen months, it's now gonna take 24 to 27. How far into this are we?
We're in the beginning. Honestly, what they've done now is they've done a lot of preparation under groundwork, which you don't see. They've done a lot of the pipe work that goes in, they've done a lot of the storm water system, they've done the filling and changing grades. So there's a lot of activity that's happened that isn't necessarily readily apparent as you drive by, but as you mentioned, there is now rebar going in and steel going up. We were informed at today's meeting that the metal building is ready to be shipped, so...
So you're gonna get a lay-down yard and start building?
That's the plan.
Good. So back to the question, we 30% in?
I think that's fair. If you look at the schedule, I think that's fair, yeah.
So, the building should've been, should've been done by now and we're only 30% into it. I'll bring that back later as kind of a question. So, contingency, right now, there was a million nine of cost savings, there was 800 or maybe 900,000 of contingency. So, we've eaten through a million nine, or we've eaten through 800 grand, give or take. What was the budget for environmental in the original budget? About 500 grand?
I think it was probably closer to 200,000.
Okay.
Which, are you talking about remediation of?
Yeah.
So that would've been included in the contractor's bid?
Okay, but, so it wasn't a separate line item?
No, I mean, it's in a schedule of values, but we received one number from the contractor.
But, let's call it 200 grand.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, a lot of money. So, million seven change order last December or January for Monford. And let's just put this in a perspective for a minute. We're talking, how many yards of asbestos-containing material?
Thirty-seven thousand cubic yard, tons, thirty-seven.
Yeah, I'd have to go back. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it's...
Yeah, a lot.
So I got 7,000 yards. Average dump truck is 14 yards. So, we're talking 500 dump truck loads of asbestos. Little bit, some of it went to Ohio, the rest is down on Tina Lane, kinda near the river. So, just to put it in perspective, shame on me, I didn't see, you know, 500 dump trucks rolling through Long Meadow, but just to mention, that's quite a lot of dump trucks, give or take. So, back to the change order. There was a 1.7 million dollar change order somewhere around November of last year that went to Monford. And this is for you folks as well as the select board. Did that contract go out to bid?
No.
No. So, if I look at the building committee minutes, Mr. Gold, I champion you for asking this question. Can, should the town spend this much without getting bids? You know, once again, this is a complicated issue, but mass general laws. Why didn't it go out to bid? I don't see anything in here that would say why it didn't go out to bid. Any idea?
As I said, you asked us this question this morning, and I said we'll have to get back to you on that. We'll have to go back and check with the previous town manager and some of the staff to see what was, why that was decided. But we'll have to get back to you later on that.
But you approved it?
Yes, we did approve it, under recommendation, and I will tell you what happened with the bid.
Okay, but it was approved, and we don't know right now if a million seven contract went out to bid or not, or why it didn't?
No, we said it did not go out to bid, and we'll tell you why when I get back.
Okay, so bear with me. In cases of extreme emergency, you can go out without competitive bids, notwithstanding any general or special, special law. The provision is you can go out without a bid. Enemy attack, sabotage, hostile actions, imminent security threat, explosion, fire, flood, earthquake, hurricane, tornado. Yeah, we've had some microbursts, but I think the townspeople really need to know why that didn't go out for bid. I guess if I was, you know, Monford, I'd say even stopping, starting construction, we want the work and people wanted Monford to stay on site. In fact, the minutes say that, you know, putting it out to bid might delay the project, increase the cost if Monford is taken off the project. I kinda understand that, but if it was supposed to go out to bid, so be it. So, I think people need to know that. So contingency, let me just go back to that for a minute. So the million nine, the 800, we've had nine change orders. Based upon the records I've looked at and kinda reconciled, there's about 134,000 of contingency left. So the town has not gone to town meeting yet. What happens on change orders between now and November 3rd? Once you go over 134,000, can the town legally approve change orders?
Well, yeah, we haven't authorized that, or we haven't bonded for that 1.3 million, so I think you need to add that to your total.
Um...
We do have an authorization to expend that money.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I would say for a city of, or town project, if a change order results in an increase in the contract price, a municipal auditor accountant must also sign the change order certifying the appropriated funds are available to cover the increased cost. I haven't done municipal accounting in 38 years, but appropriated funds, I would think, is the 21.2 that the town authorized.
I disagree with you.
I don't think people can, at home, can hear Paul Pister, the CFO, but he's saying that he feels the numbers are covered and that we did not sign any CFOs.
I don't think you have yet either.
Yeah, okay.
But you're within 134,000.
And we're going to town meeting in November.
Hopefully, nothing comes up.
Five more minutes, because we gotta move on to the next one.
No, go ahead. Five more minutes, talking, or the next issue?
Five more minutes.
Okay.
Unless someone else is gonna...
No, okay, so let me get to the crux of this. There have been four town meetings this year where the townspeople and finance committee have been asked to vote on or recommend or not recommend the town budget of 69 million, senior center of 14.4, Wolf Swamp Fields, capping of Tina Lane, et cetera. During none of those meetings, was there any discussion of 4 million dollars more than it should've cost or a delay of 12 months? Also, I know the finance committee has a limited scope. They only react to what is put in front of them by the select board. But if I was a member of the finance committee and I asked them the other day and I looked at the records, no discussion about the DPW for 15 months. So, the townspeople are being asked to vote on fiscal matters. The finance committee is being asked to recommend fiscal matters, multi-million dollars, and there's no discussion of this. Now, you might say it's in the minutes, you know, look at the select board meetings, you know, I have. The last select board meeting about this, there was no discussion. There was discussion about bike racks and the new trash barrels. This is 4 million dollars. I would've thought that at the town meeting, especially when there was a discussion of a 60 million, 69 million dollar budget for the town, on May 13th, right before that, the building committee said, have approved change orders of 2.6, there's 0.3, so 300,000 in contingency, will need to go to the fall town meeting for a 1.7 million override. There are pending 900,000 in change orders. Why was that not disclosed to the taxpayers or the finance committee?
Okay, we did, we have been informing them. This has been an open session, as we said, and I know you're disappointed that it did not come up during warrant articles. We are now finishing up the last bit, I believe, of the asbestos is going to be completed or has been completed this week or early next week, where we have the total numbers. And this is the closest we've gotten to total numbers so far, and as soon as we had that amount, we are coming to the town. And I know you're disappointed, you did not feel you heard about it earlier, but this is the process that we've gone through. Was there another question?
Yes.
Yes.
Why specifically did you not inform the town when they were approving the town budget? There is discussion about the town finances and the building commission had informed you, because you folks get the minutes of their meeting. Let me repeat, 2.6 million, there's only 300 grand in the contingency, it'll take at least nine more months to build. We're talking 4 million dollars that could've gone elsewhere.
Okay, so, your question's been asked and I've been answered. I feel that we have been open and transparent with the, and it did not come up at town meeting. If the question had been asked, we would've said where that exists. This morning, we had further discussions about other projects that are out there and other costs in regards to the town, and we try to be as transparent as possible. If people come up and ask questions, we answer them in town meetings, but usually, as the town manager told you, the warrant articles are specifically for that. I wish you had been at the town meeting in May, that you could've asked that question, we'd have appreciated that.
I could've asked the question if I knew about this. Let me just phrase it another way.
No, we gotta move on to the other warrant articles, yeah.
But this is 4 million dollars, this isn't 20,000 for trash cans.
Yes, and that's why we...
Right, so let me just one more.
Yes, one last question.
The town manager and select board, let me just go on record, chose not to disclose this. You expected citizens to look at board meetings, select board videos, and to ask you if there was a problem. You chose not to tell the taxpayers or finance committee that there was a problem.
Okay, I disagree with your characterization, but I appreciate your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions for these gentlemen? No? Okay, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, the next article that's coming up is regards to the landfill. We have had a waiver on regards to the landfill capping for many, many years. DEP, when they sat down and started working with us over a year ago, suggested that the best place to take this would be down to our landfill, but we had to cap it within one year. So, we've been working very diligently and it's in two phases. We've been brought up in front of the last town meeting, phase one, where we did explain that we had to move the asbestos down to there, and we were starting phase one, capping of it. There is going to be a phase two. The total amount of the landfill cap will be, when it's completed, 3 million dollars. We have TIAB bond up here to explain what is happening down with the landfill cap. Thank you.
We've got an article number?
Yeah, what's the?
Six.
Article six. As I said, we discussed it at the May town meeting, and when we finally put it out to bid and the numbers came back to us on phase one, we had a little clearer idea of what phase one's going to be. But I do want, at this point, to tell you, when we're talking about funding, is that our legislative workers have worked very hard. Our state senator Eric Lesser and Brian Ash, Representative Brian Ash, were able to get 5 million dollars set aside in bond money to help pay for this, as well as the, I think it was windows at Center School. Unfortunately, the governor has not released that money yet. We have been advocating, I know that Representative Ash has been on the phone trying to get the governor to release that money. I've been on the phone, the select board has really been pushing for that. If you have, want to write somewhere, sending an email or a phone call to our governor, asking for the release to help us with this payment of the landfill cap, it would be really helpful. But I want to thank Representative Ash and Eric Lesser for the very hard work they've done to try to help us with the situation. Thank you. And introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the capping. Thank you.
My name's Matt Zork, I work with TIAB Engineering. I guess to piggyback on what you just heard, you know, as part of the disposal operation of the ACM soils of the DPW yard, it was brought to Bernie, the Bernie Road landfill. The mass DEP saw the ways to prove that. You know, as part of that process, DEP required that the site be capped. So, we broke it up into two phases. The first phase is capping the ACM disposal area, 'cause it's not the entire site. The entire site is, I think, approximately 11 acres. The ACM disposal area was about two acres or two, two and a half acres. So that area, phase one, will be capped with a synthetic liner and soil cover over it, just as a typical landfill is nowadays. The remainder of the site is phase two. DEP requested that the site be cleared and grass vegetation be placed all over the site, basically for proper maintenance and, 'cause the site is a soil cover. So, essentially, if a tree falls down, a root ball could fall, could, you know, come up and trash could potentially be exposed. So the intent was to clear the site, make it so it can be maintained, and that's, that's part of the process that we're going through now. Phase one was recently bid, and we have a bid price for that. And then phase two is estimated on, you know, conversations, we had DEP on what they're requiring to close the site. So this is the, the 2 million dollars we have estimated to, for these two phases.
Any questions?
This'll be my last issue. So, I get where it's gone. I've been down there, it looks pretty murky, but let's do it from the beginning. 169,000, so call it 200 grand, I like to round numbers, was the temporary cap that was paid on the DPW budget. The town approved 800,000 in one of the town warrants this year. As I said, maybe disclosure of everything as we're doing this, because it's all related. So in the next warrant, I was only expecting 200, but as Marie explained to me today, I guess phase two will be 2 million. So, phase one is a million two. Phase two is gonna be 2 million. And Paul, I congratulate you for putting the full amount in the warrant, because now we know what the total cost is gonna be. So, we're talking 3.2 million. I get it that this was an old problem, that it's a town dump. First question. 400 dump trucks of asbestos went down there from the DPW. Did that increase the cost? Because last time I knew it was gonna be less. You gotta put a different membrane for asbestos. Is there additional cost because it's asbestos-containing material? Nobody's been able to answer that. I trust you, Ken.
No, so a typical landfill cover system is a synthetic liner, it's HDP material. That's what they use nowadays, and then there's, you know, sand drainage layer with a vegetative support layer on top of that. with a vegetative support layer on top of that. Um, this, this is the same system that is, is required by Mass DEP for solid waste as well.
Okay. Next question. Um, so this has been on the horizon for a little while. Um, I guess the town had waivers. Um, did this accelerate the necessity of capping the landfill because the asbestos-containing material was being disposed there? In other words, we're talk, we're hearing about three million dollars here. Would that have been happening if the asbestos was not trucked to Tina Lane?
I, I guess, I, I, I don't know, I don't know the whole backstory. I think eventually it would have had to been capped. Uh, I, I, I can't tell you what the timeframe would be if, if the asbestos material wasn't brought there.
I, as I explained to you before, we did have to cap it within, I think, one year of, of the remediation of the asbestos. So, the waivers were no longer going to be granted.
If remediation of asbestos never happened, when would I be paying three million dollars?
I cannot be sure when DEP would have insisted.
Yeah, I, I don't know an answer for it.
So, let me go on record. Because of the DPW debacle, three million dollars of expenditures that will increase the, and Marie, I support you on talking to Eric Lesser, I'll make a call to somebody I know in the governor's office. It'd be great if we can get this money. But, what I'm saying is, Long Meadow's already highest tax rate in the state would eventually be going up to cap this. But, because of the DPW debacle, that three million dollars has been pulled forward. So, I don't know what that means for the tax levy, the tax cap. You know, we've got major projects going on here in the next few years, the Senior Center, Wolf Swamp Fields, maybe a new middle school. All I'll say is, I expect, and I think my fellow taxpayers expect, more transparency in the future with all fiscal matters like this. So, thank you. So, I mean, basically, no additional cost, but we just brought three million home to roost now that we would have had to spend later, but now we're gonna pay it. Thank you.
I have just a question. I want, because we really, it's a quick question. Look, I want brown space that they were talking about.
Hey, her question, I want the people at home to hear. She wants to know, is this the brown space?
It was-
I think it was called the, the stump dump? Is that it?
Oh, okay.
It's not the stump.
It's not, what is, can you-
It's not the stump, it was the dump. It was the original town landfill.
Is it-
And they talked about the, putting the, putting the, um, the new, um-
The railroad crossing.
Down there. Yeah, we couldn't do it, there was a brown something that was going to have to be dealt with.
Probably, if that's something brown that has to be dealt with, you're probably, it's Tina Lane.
What Mr. Gold said is correct. If you go down there, there was originally where there was the old, I call it Tree and Stump Dump.
That was on the right, this is on the left.
Okay, so, this-
And by the way, I think it's on the left, but in any event, there was that. Then there's a railroad crossing that M-Track is fixing, and then next is the old town dump that actually caught on fire years ago.
Okay, so, uh, people can't, at home can't hear, but Mark Gold said it's the old dump. And that's, and it's a little bit farther down from the railroad crossing.
It's west.
West of the railroad crossing. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for? All right, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to invite our tree warden to come up here. We have several issues with trees, uh, this year. We had two, a microburst and another terrible storm, and, uh, caused the town a lot of expenses. Their governor is, we will be receiving no money from the state in regards to the cost of those two storms. Uh, what, could you come here and present, and that way, people at home can hear you? Thank you.
Article number?
Article-
Five. There are actually four article numbers which I'll discuss. Um, one of them's redundant and will be dropped, I believe. Um, Mr. Serzak and I separately prepared, um, some requests for additional funds to cover, um, my first disastrous year as tree warden. Um, the first, uh, article is Article Five, and it reads, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of one seventy-five thousand or a greater or lesser sum for the purpose of covering the cleanup costs associated with the July sixth, twenty nineteen, microburst that hit the town or take any other action there too." Now, anybody who was here in town remembers that there was a, a microburst, it's a drop of cold air that just bombs, um, a small area, and it knocked down a number of our trees in a confined area. Um, it, uh, the majority of the trees that were knocked down were either a poor species or had some significant decay. Uh, there was one black ash tree which just tipped over for no apparent reason, but the large majority of the trees were in, uh, bad condition, and, uh, I consider it, um, you know, uh, an unfortunate way to prune out bad trees, but I have to, um, look at the bright side, which is that it gives us an opportunity to, to plant better species and to renew our tree canopy. And, uh, one seventy-five is, was my total allocation for the year, uh, for tree removals, and so if, um, no further funds were allocated at town meeting in the fall, um, we wouldn't be able to do any further tree work, and we know there's more tree work coming. Um, does anybody have questions on Article Five before I move to the next article? Okay. Uh, the next article is the one which I think will be withdrawn, it's Article Nine, to see if the town will, uh, add an additional fifty thousand dollars, uh, to the budget. The fifty thousand dollar number, um, came about because we lost about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of, um, trees in a follow-up storm that came in August, and, uh, since there's always a lag between when, uh, a tree falls, and I put in an order to deal with it, and, uh, the work gets done, and then the bill comes in, uh, we don't really know for sure what the total cost of that was gonna be, so a little, um, fudge factor was added to that. But, um, I've been, uh, trying to keep a pretty close eye on expenditures, and since we have a contract with Northern Tree, I can tell you how much the bill is gonna be for a thirty-six inch tree. Um, and I tally that when I send in a work order for a removal. So, even if it takes three months for it to come down, I know that I have a twenty-five hundred dollar expense coming, because that's what it costs to take down a certain-sized tree. I don't know how much it costs to trim a tree, because that's based on time and materials, there's a fee for the truck. But when I do a removal, that's a fixed cost based on the diameter of the tree, and before I put in the work order, I measure that tree, so I know what the bill is gonna be. And by my accounting, um, we have spent, again, the whole budget, not counting the, if I, if we didn't have the storm, but we only had the trees that I've, uh, put in a work order for since July first, which is the beginning of the fiscal year, I've spent that hundred seventy-five thousand again. Now, I hope the rest of the year isn't like the first part of the year. I hope it's gonna slow down a little bit in the winter, and we won't be taking trees down at the same rate, uh, and that's why I've only asked for a hundred and forty thousand, and that's what you'll see on the very last unnamed article at the end, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of one hundred forty thousand dollars or a greater or lesser sum to supplement the FY twenty-twenty budget." Now, I want to preface this by saying that last year, we ran out of money in February. So, although I had tree hearings, identified trees that needed to come out, I couldn't really remove any of those until July first. So, some of those trees rolled over into this fiscal year, and I want to avoid that happening again, because by and large, when a tree is dead, it doesn't come back to life. And so, I want to have money at the end of the year to take down trees. I don't want to be in the situation where I've had a hearing, the tree needs to come down, but I'm not allowed to take it down because I don't have funds. And so, that's why I've asked for a hundred forty thousand dollars. Now, as far as the planting article, which is the one right above that, it says, "To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars or a greater or lesser sum to supplement the FY twenty-twenty budget." And the way I came up with twenty-five thousand dollars for planting is that I have, I was allocated, I believe, twenty thousand dollars for planting this year. We applied for a grant from the Commonwealth for another eleven thousand dollars, which we just passed the inspection, so I expect that money to come in. So, I've got thirty-one thousand dollars to spend, and I've spent it. I've got a hundred forty requests for trees to be planted this fall. It cost me about two hundred fifty dollars a tree between buying it and paying for the labor to get it planted, and so, I've spent my budget on requests that were made between October first of last year and May thirtieth of this year. Since May thirtieth, an additional seventy requests for trees have come in, and they come in daily, uh, because we're taking down hazardous trees, and when they come down, people want them replaced, and I think that's the ideal time to really replace them, because those hazardous trees had, um, some benefit to the town while they were young and healthy, uh, but we want to take them down before they fall on houses and cars and people. And, uh, people like the way the town looks, they want to see us plant better spe- species that are more, um, resilient to climate change, and, uh, that's what we're doing. So, uh, the last article is to, uh, replenish the budget so that we can meet the, uh, requests that have come in, uh, since May of this year.
Any questions?
Just a quick question for you. I have a thirty-six inch tree.
Mm-hmm.
It's twenty-five hundred dollars. Does that include the grinding of the stump too?
Uh, no, the stump grinding-
Could you repeat the question?
Oh, yes, yeah, the question was, does that price include stump grinding? No, stump grinding is fifteen cents an inch, and, uh, you measure the tree in both directions at the base. So, there's two different measurements for a tree. When I take one down, it's the diameter at breast height. Um, I do it with a, um, circumference tape and then divide by pi to get the diameter. But when you're grinding a stump, you measure the stump, which could be bigger than the diameter at breast height, and you take the narrowest diameter, and then it's fifteen dollars an inch. And we try to avoid that cost by doing stump grinding in-house, but because of the large backlog of stumps in town and the fact that people really don't like having a stump in their front yard, we've had to contract some of that work out. So, I think we contracted out about twenty thousand dollars worth of stump grinding to get caught up on some of that. I would love to be able to push that back into the winter and do the stump grinding in-house, um, and I think we'll have to do some of that, because, you know, there's a couple hundred stumps in town that need to be ground.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
I see one more. Yes.
Are we talking about town, town property trees that were on-town property?
Absolutely.
Only on-town property.
Yeah, uh, you know, the tree warden is legally responsible for public shade trees, which are defined as trees in or on the public way. Uh, there is some small expenditure related to park trees, which we don't manage as intensively, and in some cases, the Parks Department will kick in some money to do some tree removals in the parks.
Second question, talking about bidding earlier.
Yes.
Does the town put this contract out to bid?
We absolutely do. Oh, okay, the question is, does the, the town, uh, put the tree contract out to bid? Yes, it does, and we put it out to bid again this year. Um, there was one bidder, and the prices went up thirty percent, so it's not always, um, you know, a great benefit to the town to, to bid, uh, to put things out to bid. Sometimes prices go up, even, even, you know, when, uh, you have competitive bidding.
Why do you suspect there's only one bidder?
That is an excellent question. I wish I knew the answer. We tried to get that information from some other companies who said, you know, maybe you're too big for us this year, ask us again in the future. So, I hope the next time we go out to bid, there'll be more than one bidder.
Would they consider dividing the town in quarters or halves and have separate bids?
I'll do whatever it takes to get the trees down safely and that, at the cheapest cost to the taxpayer. If it's legal. I mean, you know, I, I'm not an expert on municipal contracting, in fact, I've had my hand slapped a couple times for not understanding the rules, uh, but, you know, I'm learning. Yes?
We had a, we had a larger than thirty-six or not private property, uh, bid by a, another contractor for somewhere around twelve, fifteen hundred.
Yes, well, uh, the town is required to pay prevailing wage, and so, when a contractor comes in and takes down a tree for the town, they may have to pay their employees more than they usually pay them, and that's the law in Massachusetts.
Can you find your own tree on that greenbelt?
You absolutely can plant a tree on the town right-of-way with permission from the tree warden, and he's very happy to grant that.
Save your buck.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna cover two of the articles. Uh, one is Article Eight, I feel it's appropriate to talk about now, and that is the sixty-five thousand dollars that will be our lesser sum to be provided for the town's share of the twenty-five percent of the Municipal Vulnerability Program grant. And I feel this is important to talk right after we found the expenses that we had on those two storms that happened this year, and what the governor has set up is a grant program for us to try to figure out how our climate is changing, whether it's more storms, more rain, and the, um, our fire chief put together a plan on what were important issues, and one of the stakeholders was our tree warden, because our big expense this year appears to be trees with the rains and the storms we had. So, the twenty-five percent, we are approved, we will be getting a grant, but we have to chip in the twenty-five percent. And so, the sixty-five thousand dollars is the one quarter, the rest will be grant money we will get, and hopefully, that will help us with the trees. And, um, actually, our first thing we're going to do is a massive stormwater plan, because as you all know, we have a lot of water pouring into our dingles, and it's causing erosion, and we need to shore that up, and there's, I would say, probably a million dollars of projects every year for stormwater issues. So, we will, um, that will be the first thing we're going to do with the money. So, that's Article Eight. Article Seven I wanted to take up, and that was the sum of a hundred thousand dollars, greater or lesser sum, from the operating budget for legal expenses. Now, that seems really high. Um, there's two reasons that we have set aside the money for legal expenses. One is to deal with the asbestos issue that you've just heard about, and we talked about, we do have a team of attorneys working with us on that issue, and then also, we are, have hired a legal firm that specializes in, um, gas metering companies and gas pipelines in order to tell us what our authorities are and what our rights and responsibilities are in regards to the project that is being proposed at the Long Meadow Country Club. Uh, any questions on those two articles? No? Okay, I'd like to ask Mark Gold to come up and discuss the article that he helped write.
The number is?
Seventeen A. Thanks, Marie. I'm, I'm just gonna discuss quickly Article Seventeen A. Article Seventeen A, and I'll read it for the folks at home or people here, it says, "See if the town will amend a section of our bylaws underwater in sewer," uh, and, and to say, "Add the phrase 'by fees based on connection and measured usage' to Section two dash six oh one F." So, it will now read, "The wa- public, the Department of Public Works shall install and maintain improper working condition a water meter on each service and shall charge for water by fees based on connection and measured usage. Uh, the DPW shall require a separate connection for each estate." There's a, gonna be an explanation in the warrant, but the, the intent of this is to try to create some, uh, some equity. Right now, we have a, a large number of properties in town who pay nothing for their water, and the reason they do is because they don't use any water, and yet, when they come home at the end of the winter, when they're away, or six months when they're away, turn on the faucets, they expect the water to come out. Well, the truth is, we have expenses year-round, and we have expenses not related to what comes out of your water tap. Those, those expenses are primarily capital costs of doing water improvements through the town, and so, people who pay their water and use their water year-round are subsidizing people who don't use their water for any section of, of, of the year. And so, the intent is to make your water bills parallel your sewer bills, and if you look at the sewer bill, uh, the sewer bill has a component of, of, um, connection and a component of usage, and we anticipate, we would like to have the water do the same thing. We think that for the smallest users in town, this will actually reduce their, their overall costs of water. For the larger users of town, it may have very little impact because there's so much volume being used. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but the intent is, if this was passed, would be changed the waters so that instead of being two dollars and forty-seven cents, whatever the number is this year, per hundred cubic feet of water, it would likely drop below that, and you would be added, added some kind of a, a meter bill of twenty-five or thirty dollars. In the past, it was a twenty-five dollar one-time fee, and so, everybody would contribute to that. Okay?
Sixteen two?
Sure.
You initiated that?
Okay, yeah, the- Okay, yeah, the, there, there's, oh, sure, there's a, uh, another bylaw proposal, Article Sixteen, that, uh, proposes that we open polls at, uh, at 7:00 AM rather than 6:00 AM. In our last, uh, annual town meeting in, in June, uh, there were a lot of people who showed up at, at, uh, at the community house at 7:00 AM to vote, only to find out that the polls didn't open until 8:00 AM, and it was somewhat inconvenient for them to have to, they went to work, they came back. And it turns out that we have the right to, to set those hours, and, and since there's a demand for it, we thought it would make sense to, to do that, to meet the, the request of our citizens to open the polls at 7:00 AM. Interestingly enough, on state and national elections, the state requires us to open the polls at 7:00 AM. So this would make all of our, and which is why there was confusion, I believe, at this past election in June. And so this would make our town elections consistent with, with statewide and federal elections in terms of hours for the polls to be open.
You're saying, change it to seven?
We would change it to be 7:00 AM so that it would be consistent.
Correct. That would be the intent of the, of, of the article, make our polls for town meetings. Steve?
Hey, Mark, um, have you had any feedback from the town clerk's office as to their ease in, in securing workers for the polls?
Yeah, we had a question. The question was, have, has the town clerk commented on this, about being able to secure workers for the polls? The answer is, yeah, that was the first person we checked with. Catherine Ingram said, "No problem, they do it." Like I said, they do it for, for the other elections, and they felt very comfortable doing it for, for the townwide election.
Fifteen two.
We're going backwards here.
Because I realize Mr. Kennedy's here, wouldn't want to cover fifteen.
Sure. Uh, oh, yeah, to the extent I know that. Okay, there, there's another article, Article Fifteen. It says, "See if the town will vote to authorize Long Meadow Select Board to petition the Mass General Legislature to revoke a May 14th town meeting vote, where by the town accepted provision of Mass General Law and created four-member Board of Election Commissioners to replace the three-member registrars of voters." Uh, this is a fairly detailed legal requirement in that we, we had, had an issue, and if you go back historically, the town of Long Meadow had always had a four-person Board of, uh, Board of Registrars, and back then, which is probably 15 or 20 years ago, our, our town clerk was elected, and she was historically, uh, it was Louise Lyons for people who've been in town forever, and she was a Republican, and so the, the appointed commissioners were three people, and it was always one other Republican and two Democrats to make it fair. When we switched over our, our system, we actually have our, our town clerk who was unenrolled and not involved in town politics, and we've run into some problem of, of whether or how we make that equal. And so we thought that last May, if we just created a four-member Board of Commissioners to replace the three-member registrars of voters, we'd take care of it. Well, in fact, we created more problems than we caused, and so what we need to do is rescind that. But it turns out, you can only rescind that by the same body that, that, that voted in. So the intent is, is to, to rescind that, uh, that vote, and then we'll, we're gonna go back in at a better, later time and actually fix what the issue is. The, the, the details are, are probably more than people wanna know, but if they do wanna know, certainly write us or call us, and we'll tell you the details of what we created in, in, as I call, an unintended consequence of our last May's vote. I don't know, is that covered?
I'll just add one question to this.
Steve, why don't you come up so people can hear? It's not we can't hear, but the microphones, people at home may be able to carry. Steve Kennedy is one of the, is, has historically been on the register.
I'm Steve Kennedy. I live at 11 Western Drive, and I was one of, uh, three appointed registrars of voters, uh, going back 17, 18 years now. When Louise Lyons was town clerk, she was for a period of time a Republican, as you stated, Mark. However, that changed at one time.
Right.
She became unenrolled.
Okay.
So our current town clerk and past town clerk are unenrolled. Uh, the, the Mass General Law's allowed for the town to adopt a provision of Chapter 51, which allows for us, to the town, to have three appointed registrars. They could be two Republicans and one Democrat, or two Democrats and one Republican, um, plus the unenrolled town clerk. And that, that suited, every, the, the Commonwealth is very happy with that. Now, you folks at the last annual town meeting, and at the annual town meeting is the only time this issue can be addressed, so I'm gonna ask you right now, can this be addressed at a, at the special town meeting? Because I don't think so. Uh, but at the last annual town meeting, you folks decided to adopt a different section of Mass General Laws. Um, not so sure anybody ever read what that section was because it opened up a whole lot of problems for the town of Long Meadow, specifically, upon acceptance of Chapter 16, the town clerk is to turn over all records, everything, to this new group of now four people. The four people don't want it. That's what it comes down to. The four people don't want it. They don't know what to do, they don't know how to do it. And it's a big problem. So right now, the town clerk, maybe doing some of her old duties, but I'm not so sure that she can do that. I think the, the board has to, has to do, the Board of Election, Election Commissioners has to take on these duties. They don't wanna do it. So your choice is what? Uh, hire four new election commissioners who are paid $300 each, $1,200 a year? We're paying for people who don't wanna do their job, while we're paying the moderator $100 a year for somebody who does her job magnificently, in my opinion. And, and I just, I, you, you, as a can, can of worms, not of my making, you guys did it. What are you gonna do to solve it? Three years you have to wait? Maybe the legislature's gonna say, "Hmm, no, town of Long Meadow, you made your bed, now sleep in it." What are you gonna do?
The, the answer is, we don't know.
The answer is, we don't.
And, 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 Steve, you've...
Ask him to file it, it's, uh, he will file it.
Absolutely. But if the legislature says no?
Oh, if it doesn't pass?
Yeah. It doesn't pass.
Right.
Just as you come to the town and say, "Well, I want another $4 million to cap this and landfill and DPW, and if the town says no, then what?"
We know.
Plan B.
Exactly. Thanks. So again, this is the draft warrant. Uh, there are other articles in here regarding CPC. Uh, we didn't even write the ones for easements. We gotta, uh, we get, receive easements for the North End Interceptor. Uh, there are discussions about bonding money for the Adult Center. Uh, and instead of going through all 20, are there any questions on any of the others? No? Okay. Uh, anyone at home, if you've reviewed your draft warrant, you do have questions, uh, don't hesitate to send us emails or give us a call. The actual final warrant will be posted on October 22nd, and we will have the solid numbers and the final writing of all of them because, as you'll see, there's a lot of, there's a whole list at the end of things we're still considering. But since there were a lot of financial issues, we wanted to be able to bring, um, tie-in bond, as well as colliers, and Weston and Sampson for, so people could understand the history of the situation down at DPW. Yes?
I have a question about the last town meeting.
Yes.
And since this is a public forum, I thought I'd come and ask it.
Sure.
Unfortunately, speak with the select board, I know there's no back and forth, so it can be very difficult to get information.
Yeah, you wanna come to the... I will try.
So, um, you just... Oh, Andrew Fox, 29 Loren Street.
Mm-hmm.
So at most things at town meeting that are voted for...
Yeah.
I don't see any second guessing of the decisions that are made. I don't see the select board or the, the town financial people saying, "Well, you know, it was voted on, but, yeah, we don't agree with it, or, we're not gonna do it." So Article 41, um, was the town, someone in the town, Mr. Crane or somebody else's, attempt to change the commercial, uh, uh, vehicle bylaw.
And it did not pass.
It did not pass.
Right.
And there were many comments made about it and other bylaws that people were frustrated were not being enforced. And the thought was that once that vote went through, that somebody, uh, would make sure that the, the will of town meeting got done. Uh, but that doesn't seem to be happening.
If you find that there's, the original bylaw that was not changed, is not being enforced, be sure to contact the current town manager, Mr. Moynihan. So, uh, send...
Aren't the same people that were dragging their feet for the last two years saying, "Well, we're not doing anything, we're not doing anything, we're not doing anything because we're taking it to town meeting," aware that all these back complaints are there, that they should now be enforcing?
Well, all I know is that, as I said, Mr. Moynihan's been here for only a couple of months, so if there is something that you feel is not being enforced now, please contact him and let him know.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for coming and, uh, listening, and we'll look forward to hearing from you. Thanks.